I'd like to call this meeting of the Elkhorn Common Council to order. It's August 18th, 2025 at 5:30. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unrecognizable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Tim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Harvey.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.
Here.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Here.
Scott McLory.
Here.
Ken Minow.
Here.
Dan Roberts is absent.
All right, first we've got public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to be heard tonight in public comment? Asking again, anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and go on to the consent agenda, which is the council meeting minutes and human resources minutes from August 4th, 2025, and the common council minutes from August 4th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are passed. Next, we have bills payable in the amount of $3,781,703.91. I'll make a motion to approve that in that amount.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Scott McLory.
Yes.
Ken Minow.
Yes.
The motion passes to pay the bills. Next report of city officers. The first thing we'd like to do is swear in some new fire department personnel. If Tristan McNamara, Dan Ace, and Kyle Schmidt would come up. You can come up and stand here in front of the counter and get sworn in. When you're done getting sworn in, we'll need you to sign those. Those you have there. Got a pen up here.
Okay, here we go. I, fill in your blank. State your name.
You guys can come up here and take pictures. Come up here.
All right, we'll start over. I, state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
I will support those who I serve with.
I will support those who I serve with.
And those who I am sworn to protect.
And those I am sworn to protect.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Without reservation.
Without reservation.
Discharge my duties as a lieutenant of the Elkhorn Area Fire Department.
Discharge my duties as a lieutenant of the Elkhorn Area Fire Department.
Under the appointing of the department.
Under the appointing of the department.
And according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
And according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
I accept this self-imposed.
I accept this self-imposed.
And self-enforced obligation.
And self-enforced obligation.
As my responsibility and make these promises freely.
As my responsibility and make these promises freely.
Without mental reservations.
Without mental reservations.
Or purposes of evasion.
Or purposes of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter, so help me God.
The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations.
(Applause). too. City government in action's pretty fun. And exciting.
All right, thanks, Mayor, for facilitating that transition. Appreciate that. We're supposed to have the hearing on the railroad crossing petition was supposed to be August 12th. The railroad filed a request to postpone that, which the OCR granted, so that new hearing date is tentatively scheduled for September 23rd. We haven't gotten a time yet, but that's what's tentatively been scheduled, so. We had a pre-con meeting with Belinsky Homes for the new Harvest Point Villas condos, which are the new units that are going to be by Walgreens, so they are looking to move forward to that very, very quickly, so you should already see. I don't know if you drove up there at all today, Matt, but I know they were going to be putting up silt fencing and getting started soon.
I did not get a chance to get up there, but I do remember them saying they're going to start to get some erosion control measures in place, so.
So that looks to be moving very, very quickly. I could say just Newman Development, which is doing the Sugar Creek Bridge Homes, they closed on the purchase of their property from the Cook family at the end of July, so that is moving, you know, full steam ahead. They're working on the SIP right now. Just as an FYI, and I know you're aware of this, but this is more like a public announcement, we will be switching from our emails from a .org to a .gov starting August 22nd. Your emails will be automatically forwarded for the time being, but we do encourage people to start using the .gov. Rebecca, do you have anything to add to that?
I would recommend to start using the .gov as of Monday, the 25th.
And I know, I think Rebecca's going to be sending more information to the council about that transition.
Yep.
And I do want to thank Rebecca for her work on not only this, but also when she got the website updated from .org to .gov, so that was a cybersecurity recommendation that we had received, so that's probably the reason why we're doing this, also because anytime we tried to file anything with the federal government, they did not like the .orgs. They wanted confirmation that we were actually a city, so that was part of the reason, too, for this switch. I know Katie ran into issues trying to get stuff filed, so. And then the central water treatment plant reservoir rehab project is out for bid right now. Those bids close August 26th, and there should be, you know, bids for the council to review on the first meeting in September, on September 2nd, so we're eagerly awaiting that. And then lastly, I just wanted to defer to the chief. Do you have any updates, chief, you'd like to give about public safety concerns over the weekend?
Sure. I don't know if anyone heard from anyone or saw anything, but we did have an incident on Saturday about midday that originated in the 400 block of North Church Street, which the initial call was a report of a fight in progress with a number of people and possibly a weapon involved. That unfortunately spilled over into the downtown area on both Saturday, and then follow-up investigation on Sunday as well. As a result of that investigation, which is still ongoing, we have taken five people into custody and actually did recover a weapon that was believed to be involved during that incident. So the investigation continues, so.
Thank you, chief, and that's it for me, Mayor, unless the council has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next reports of city boards and community partners. Fire advisory.
Nothing to report, except for the next meeting will be October.
Okay, great. Library. Are you on your own, Peter?
No, actually, I'm not on the library.
Oh, you're not. Who Dan is, that's right. We will move on. Rec advisory.
Yeah, the next banshee ad hoc meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 26th at 5:00 PM here at City Hall, and then the next park and rec advisory board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 10th at 5:30 PM, again, here at City Hall.
Thank you, Gary. Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, and Joel, thank you for creating some excitement, additional excitement for Saturdays on the square. I got multiple phone calls rather quickly, but thank you for handling it professionally, and everyone felt very good after that. In our chamber world, we're unfortunately starting to wind down with our summer as school is fast approaching, but we have contracted content writers and visitors. We have multiples of them coming during the Walworth County Fair. They were just at Evergreen. They will be doing some apple picking and pumpkin picking, and they were at Deuster Beck's recently in our area. We had some of them downtown about three weeks ago at Friends on the Square and someplace else, so we're waiting for all of that contact to come back, and then we'll be creating short reels to promote our community and different events and places to stop in our community. If you didn't know, it's a Walworth County Fair is eight days away technically, so come out and join us for the 76th Annual, starting on Wednesday, the 27th through the 1st, and we have a great lineup. We're excited to have some good entertainment on the stage and some different arrangements for when truck and tractor pulls are and things like that, so if you have any questions or concerns, reach out to the fairgrounds, or if I can help in any way, please let me know.
Thank you, Chris. Katie James.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that on last Wednesday, August 13th, Adam and Matt and I went to Janesville to meet with the Board of Directors for the Jeffress Family Foundation. As you remember, we'd been asked to apply for their grant, which is a matching grant that will allow us to fundraise toward improvements of the banshee. We hung out with them for about an hour. They were very nice and very excited. I think they love the banshee just as much as we do. It was 90 minutes after we left that meeting that we found out we'd been awarded. An official press release is going to be coming out soon, but the banshee ad hoc committee will have a lot to discuss, and that is that we're going to start looking at fundraising partners and figuring out how the next three years of the banshee is going to look. So the 100th anniversary, doing a big blitz next year is our goal, to really make sure the community is aware of the wonderful amenity that we have, and hopefully we'll raise some cash. So as Alderman Payson said, the next meeting is on August 26th. We'll bring those fundraising partners to them. The last thing I wanted to share is a little personal brag. With that award, I just topped over the $10 million mark in bringing funding to our community, just shy of my three-year anniversary, so I slept well that night. Thank you, everybody.
Nice job. Yeah, and Mayor, I just wanted to sort of just, I guess, tag on to that, just say, I think it goes without saying, but Katie did a phenomenal job on that presentation, and she's worked tremendously hard, advocating for the city with the Jeffress Foundation for the last probably year or so, two years. So it's been a lot of back and forth calls and emails and personal meetings, so, you know, and I could say the Jeffress Foundation made a comment during the presentation about that the city's application is what everybody else should do, and that, you know, that other people who've come to them don't have an idea of what they should do, how to do it, and that they could use hers, Katie's, as an example. So Katie did a great job, and just wanted to, you know, let the council know just how well Katie did, and wanted to thank Katie publicly for her efforts, so.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Katie. Committee reports, we've got human resources.
Yeah, we met and we went into closed session, we came out of closed session. We chose not to take any action regarding the 2025 employee climate survey results, and we also recommended a compensation package for specific city employees that can go towards the full council that was unanimously approved. And I don't know if Adam wants me to expand on that, or do I need to?
Not until after closed session, probably.
Okay, fair enough. That's what I assumed.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Next, we have a presentation from Dio Gonzalez, President of True Link Lending, for a concept plan for a CUP, for construction services facility, tax key Y E and M 00005, which is next to the Holiday Inn Express, I guess would be a way to describe it, and it looks like Christina Green is going to help present this.
Sorry, I don't know why Dio's name was on there, other than she emailed.
Yeah, that's all I had here, but great.
Just for clarification, she called me and said, requested that she present tonight, so that's why she was listed on the agenda. No, it's okay, I just, that's the reason why, so.
Thank you. I have Brad instead, that's okay. She's here, you can answer questions, but, okay, so as you know, I'm Christina Green from Sweet Mayor, 114 North Church Street. I do represent the owner of, then President of E N M S Corp One, Inc. The buyers are here, the owner's under contract to sell the property to 4A's Development Group. Brad Kane is the managing member, he's here, he can speak a little bit about the business. I'm going to kind of give an overview for any of the board members that were in at the Plan Commission, and also I've learned some new information since the Plan Commission, so hopefully I can give some useful information, and then Brad will talk about the business a little bit. They are looking to get a conditional use permit for construction services at the site, the property is Y E and M 00005. It is the parcel at the southwest end of the subdivision. It's right next to the Outlet and over by the soccer fields, and it's up on the screen, so that makes it easier. It's Zone B5 Highway Business District. The comprehensive plan designation is highway-oriented commercial. Construction services are allowed as a conditional use in the zoning district and matches the comprehensive plan. The proposed buyer is a home builder of modular homes and of stick-built homes, and they're here to present a concept plan for the modular homes. What they'd like to do is to build two modular homes on the site to use it for their offices, for sales office, and for design, where they pick out the final designs, pick out the final homes, et cetera. Brad will speak more to that. Initially, they intend to put two modular homes on the site, and hopefully in the future they would love to add more homes to the site as more models, as they expand. Then visitors can come and tour the models and customize the home features. It's ideal because this is an underutilized infill lot, and it would benefit the overall development because it would bring out-of-town guests into the town, and Brad will talk about, because they pull from, I think, Madison, Milwaukee, but he will speak more about We understand that, from learning, from talking to staff, that this TID district is not supporting itself, and I think I saw on your agenda, actually, that you're going to have to loan money to this TID. So we understand that this, even though the Loves was built and the Holiday Inn was built, the TID is not supporting itself. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I thought was happening. And we also understand that, under the master development agreement, that there is supposed to be a sit-down restaurant out of the development. That sit-down restaurant, according to the master development agreement, appears to have been supposed to be in the location where the restaurant started and never stopped, or never continued. This site that we're proposing the construction services on will not prohibit a sit-down restaurant in the restaurant parcel, and in fact, it may actually help a sit-down restaurant come to the area because development brings development, and because they are hopefully, oops, sorry, hopefully bringing in people from out of town to look at these houses, and so that would bring more people to the area and maybe could help support a restaurant in the future. We would all love to see one there that is just, not this particular site that we're talking about. I also understand there are some questions from staff about whether or not this parcel was supposed to be walking paths for the development, and in looking at the master development plan and the original concept plan, there were some, in the concept plan, there were some paths and some ponds out in this area, but the final plat that was approved has Outlet 1 and Outlet 2. This is Lot 5, and it's not showing any ponds or plats on this lot, so we believe the final plat that was approved by the city and was recorded was not intending to make this just another Outlet for, it's not an Outlet. So Outlet 1 does contain ponds and wetlands and flood plain, and then there's an Outlet 2 right next to it, and I think you can, so that's the concept plan, right? Is that what you're showing right now?
Yeah.
And then, do you have the plat that shows them where the Outlets are?
This shows the Outlets, doesn't it?
That's the proposed site plan before they got to the final plat. Sorry, I don't know if you have it. They kind of wrap around, so this lot is down here, and then, I don't know, that's...
That's all I have in the packet.
Can you go back, maybe, to my, or the aerials that show this lot, because you'll see the Outlet 1 and Outlet 2 on it.
That are included in the packet?
That was included in our packet that we filed originally. Do you have it? There. So the pond right there that he's got is right there, that's Outlet 2, and then Y E and M 0006 is Outlet 1, and the parcel we're speaking of is Lot 5. So anyways, so that, just to clarify, between the master development plan and the final plat, something changed. I don't know, I wasn't there at the time. But it also should be noted, if this is to remain as just open space and walking paths, then it would not be able to help the TID, it would not help increase the increment. So to allow these buyers to come in, they've indicated the two model homes that they would like to build will be at least 250 value per home, and then the purchase price of the land, if you add that to it, that would be an increase of the tax base of at least 700,000 to 800,000 almost immediately, because currently the assessed value of the lot is only showing at 17,000, is a vacant lot out there that's not being utilized. And in fact, like I said before, if the buyer establishes itself at this location and makes it one of its main locations, he would like to add more model homes in the future, thus increasing the tax base in the future. And then also, I did speak to him, though, about, because there is flood plain out there, and about the concern about the walking paths, and he is willing, if this is approved, to actually put some walking paths, cut some through the flood plain, and connect them to the walking paths if they go through the Outlets that are around there. So he would allow walking paths through his parcel, one, because that's something the city would like, would help the city, but two, would also help him to have people walking through there to see his models, so it's kind of a win-win for everybody. So that would, you know, would be what he would do for the walking paths. And so this proposed use of construction services does match your future land use plan and does match your current zoning. The only variations that this buyer wouldn't require is he would like to allow for non-brick exterior, because that's what the actual homes will be, they will not have brick exterior, and so he wants to show what the end purchaser really would get. The other thing is that the building in the back of the Loves is just a metal-framed building, so it would not be inconsistent with some of the other buildings in the subdivision. The other variation is on the roof pitch, and there are other buildings, most of the buildings actually in the subdivision have flat roofs, so again, it would not be inconsistent. So those are really, but we're here, we wanted to hear everyone's comments. We want to know, before they spend a lot of money and do the engineering and come forward with a conditional use permit application, what are your concerns, what, you know, what do you want us to address, et cetera? But I would like to let Brad speak for a little while first, and then I'd like to take comments and questions and go from there, if that's okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not going to take much of your time, so I appreciate you allowing us to come in. As I said before, last time I was here, we love this area, I love this area. I lived in Madison for 21 years. Right now, I live in Colorado. We're licensed in Colorado and Wisconsin, and with Colorado, we do not have a spot yet. Our focus is Wisconsin first, so just so everybody knows, this is our spot, and we had a spot also in Lake Mills, right off the highway, that we got it accepted off here. I let that go, so I lost that spot because I want to be here in this location, because what we've found so far is that we have a stack of folder of people in Wisconsin, Illinois even, that have contacted us about, hey, we want a home. We want to build something. Some are affordable, some need affordable housing, three bedroom, two bath, they want something for 240, 250. We can do it. We have some that want to buy a house for 600,000, 700,000, we have models for them. So it's, every family has different needs once, and it's on their lifestyle. We have, what we're doing is we want to show that we have the models and the features to help all these families, even if it's affordable housing, that we can get them in for 250 or 300. They own a home. It's tax dollars for communities. So my vision is, and we really want this spot, the vision is, it's centrally located for us, number one. I love this area, but people are coming in from as far as Sock City, they're coming over, over all the way from Dubuque areas, wanting homes. They're coming from Milwaukee down Chicago. Centrally located, everybody can get here to see the homes. Second is, the vision is to build a structure, an infrastructure, that we have lending inside, we're custom building inside, we're doing remodels, we're having salespeople, so this may seem small, but on the scope of the, in the grand scheme of things, in two, three, four years, we expect that to be buzzing with several different people and different job sites there doing different things. So our vision is to grow this like a Clayton Homes. If you guys have seen Clayton Homes, we had sent a picture and it got lost to Christina, but Clayton Homes is a builder, they're on a major highway in Colorado Springs, which is huge. They're, all their spots are on major highways like this, and what we envision, is very similar to them, is they have eight different models out, and that's what we want. We want this to be like a parade of homes for families coming in. If they want to see a single wide with a tray, with a nice deck, they have it. If they want to see a big 2,400-square-foot home with marble countertops, custom cabinets, they can see it. So our vision is to have this like a small parade of home, and from the highway, this is our business, we need visibility. We can't be on the backs, we need visibility, and that's why we, this spot right here, we love it. We want to pay tax, we want to be part of the community, it's going to bring revenue in, we think we're going to bring people in all over the state coming in to see it. We're going to be flying people in from Colorado if they want to see it. They're coming here to see the homes. We don't have, we don't have this set up in Colorado yet, so we're excited to be here. We want to be part of the community, we want to bring tax dollars, and once we're done with this site, it will look professional, it's going to look beautiful, and it's going to be a spot in there that will be a nice addition to everything else we have going on here, so I hope you'll really consider us and consider us coming in. Our goal is to be a great asset to the community and build something that's beautiful and that attracts people, and like I said, this will be our base, and we're, like, they're going to be coming in from all over. We, like I said, I should have brought my stack of leads, we have a stack like this of families that wanting homes, that we're telling, we're coming, give us some time, we're working through it, but they're all over the state. So again, I understand, I appreciate considering this opportunity for us, but we really want to be here, and I hope you'll take into consideration to let us start. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? I've got a couple. These model homes you're proposing, will they be on foundations?
Yeah, what we'll do, Mayor, is we'll put them on a block foundation, so we won't pull, but they'll be sitting on block foundations, yes, and then if you want to, if you want, we have, because some of the homes are custom, so if they have to be brick on the front, we can run brick up so far, two of them, so yes, they'll be sitting on a block foundation, so that they look like a real home, yes. So we're not necessarily going to run plumbing and all that to it, but they'll be sitting on a foundation, yes. on a foundation, yes.
Yeah, I guess my concern is I'm wondering, you're, you're talking about creating tax dollars. I think if they're, if they're not on permanent foundations, do they get...
They'll be on, they'll be on permanent, they're going to be, this is a permanent foundation.
Not, not just blocks supporting them?
Yes. That, that, when I say block, it's, because when we built...
It'll be a regular basement or house space.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Will you be storing, as you get rolling out, will you be storing model homes on that lot?
No.
Moving some in and out or whatever?
No, we won't. That lot's, that lot there's purely for, purely for sales. We're going to have a separate location where we'll be moving on that. We don't care where that's at. We'll have a separate location where we move our models in and out. And if we have, if we buy some models that are from a company, Champion Homes or Cascade Home, wherever, and they bring them in, we're going to store them someplace else. So no, that's going to be a clean sales center, very clean spot, yeah.
The other question, and I'm not sure you have the answer to this, maybe Matt. You've got the right map up there, Matt. There was a question about easement, that the, the improved street ends right at the corner of the, the lot they're proposing. Do you remember that, Christina? At the time, but did anyone dig any deeper into that?
We did not, but I think what, I forget her name.
Naomi.
Naomi, yes. Was suggesting that the driveway was going to have to move over to right where Matt's arrow just was, right? Matt? So that if, even if the easement ends right there, the driveway just has to move over. And they said they could move the driveway over.
Yeah, okay.
So that's not an issue. Well, look, we can look into the easement as well, but they can move the driveway over, they said.
I think it was, if it's okay, I think it was discussed extending the right of way down to at least the end of the parcel, but...
That would be great.
And these are modular homes, not mobile homes?
That's correct, that's correct. So they're, they're modular homes, and then also we're going, we're also going to state them off.
At, at the planning commission meeting, and it was after some discussion, the consensus of the planning commission members was that the project would be more favorable in another location within the city, but not the applicant's desired location. That came from the planning commission. They had, they had about five or six staff comments that, where that all came about.
Do you have, do you have those? Ken, I've got them here.
Do you?
If you want to, if you want to...
Yeah, yeah, we could throw them out there.
This is staff comments regarding this. The proposed development is not consistent with the 2040 future land use map. Number two, the architectural design of the buildings are not consistent with the intent of the zoning district. Number three, the use is a mix between residential and commercial development, which is not consistent with the zoning district. And number four, although there will be no real living space, the buildings would stand out from all other development within the business park. So that, that tells you where staff was at.
And can I actually address some of those?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Because I've learned more information since the initial meeting as well, and I apologize because I do not represent the buyers. So I was getting information through the broker, and I represent the seller. And so I was presenting a concept plan with information I'd gotten from the broker. And then when Brad came to the meeting, I learned more, and then since then I've spoken with him. So as far as not consistent with the 2040 comprehensive, or future land use map plan, construction services actually is. I think, and I think that goes to Alderman Payson's question, I think staff was thinking of these more like mobile homes, like homes that were just personal property, not actually modular homes that were going to be permanent and built. But I'm not certain as to why she said that, but this is commercial, construction services is commercial highway, and this is construction services. So I'm not, that was one comment I know she had. And then there was one about the architectural design is not consistent with the intent of the zoning district. And again, the only variations we're requesting is the brick, not having to put brick on the front, although I hear Brad says he could put brick if he has to. But I do know that there are, the building in the back of the Loves is, has no brick at all. And then the pitch of the roof, and the buildings out there, most of them are flat roofs, so to have not a full pitch is actually, is actually inconsistent, in my opinion. I guess it's, that's up to staff, we'd have to talk through that. And it's not necessarily a mix between residential and commercial, because there is no residential out there. These are model homes for a construction services building, but nobody's living out there, so it's not a mix. It might look like a residential building, but it's not a mix of residential and commercial use. So I just wanted to be clear on some of those. I'm not sure if I hit them all, or if there were more, more points.
This is, guys, this is a look right here of, of a major, this is all commercial in Colorado Springs, right off a major highway. So that is a major highway, that's the biggest highway coming out of Denver, up on the other, the other way. Keep going. Right up there at the sign is, right up top, that's 25. It's one of the busiest highways in the state. And that's Colorado Springs, that's our, that's our vision right there. Something like that, where we have...
But you would have permanent, permanent buildings?
Yes, we have permanent. We have permanent.
So those don't look like they're permanent?
No, we have permanent. So our homes, they're, they're selling homes, but ours is going to be, we're going to have like, we have Skyliner Home, which is 2,200 square feet. We have Commodore Homes, which is 2,400 square feet with dormers. I mean, these are going to be on permanent foundations.
Okay. Because I said those don't look permanent.
But I would...
Why don't you show it through Pablo? Not Colorado Springs.
Oh, that's not Colorado Springs?
Right, that's Florida, right there. You see it?
Oh, we want Colorado Springs.
Right.
The other one I was looking at, that's Pablo, Colorado, the one we wanted to show was Colorado Springs.
Okay. So can we, are there any more comments or concerns, I guess?
I guess my question for Ken and then for the presenters, you said that the planning commission recommended that this project take place somewhere else in the city?
Yeah, you know, they'll get another, another lot possibly in a different location. I think that was the majority of us, in fact, it could have been all of us, that just didn't think that it fit in there.
Okay.
Simply, you know, but there's other places in the city where they could be. He wants to be off the highway, I don't know how many, you know, lots we have off the highway, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think, I think, ladies and gentlemen, on the, on, with our business, if you may, no one can remember, in this business, it's, it's like the RV place across the highway, right? This business we're in, in the city's going to be no good. It's no good. Our business is a visible business. It's like cars, it's like RVs. This business we're doing, it's, it has to be visible, it's important to be visible. That's a key component of why we were looking at that spot. And we looked at Lake Mills, right off the main highway there, there was a spot here, because it was visible from the highway. And as we look at some of these big dealers across the country, they're all there. And it brings, we've seen it, we went to a big builders network in North Carolina, and there's a hundred builders in to do this, and they're all right there and bring, bringing right off the main highway for that visibility. And that, that's important to us.
And I would, not to correct you, Ken, but I believe there was one planning commission member who said that if there, since there's nothing else there, whoever was sitting over here, that he said, you know, why not? Right now, you have nothing in that TID. You have nothing there, no one's coming there, no one's asking to come there. This is the least desirable lot in that subdivision. I would think to have something there is better than nothing to support this TID. You've got 10 years left on that TID, I think. And nobody's knocking on the door to do anything else out there, so I think we should keep that in mind.
I think in this case, the something being better than nothing doesn't apply there.
Can you elaborate on that? I guess I'm confused.
Well, like, you know, I know the majority of the planning commission felt that it just wasn't the right place. So, you know, even though there's an empty lot or, or empty lots, that doesn't just fall right into place there. I see his, you know, off the highway, that's fine, there's got to be other places off the highway. Forty-three's a long highway.
All right, is that how everyone else feels?
I guess I would agree with Ken on that. I was at the planning commission, and I thought that was the general opinion at that time, so, for whatever that's worth. Anyone else like to dive in here?
We just don't know enough.
Sorry?
I, I don't know enough about it, and we have to also look at what our other boards look at and recommend as they're moving forward. You know, so at this point, you know, they've done all their due diligence at this point, so I mean, my suggestion is you go back to the planning commission with more information, and you convince them. You convince them, they approve it, it comes to us, and then it makes it easier for us to approve. But if they have concerns over it, do what you got to do to go back and win them over. That's what I would suggest. And you went over to planning commission with the appropriate whatever, and then it comes back to us. And if we have a, a goal with the planning commission, which involves, you know, zoning and all that good stuff, then it makes it easier for the council to pass.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have anything else? Anything? Thank you.
Oh, I don't have to thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming in. Thank you, Mr. Next, we have unfinished business, a discussion regarding the proposed 2026 to 2030 capital improvement plan.
Yeah, Mayor, so this is, as we've said before, will be on the agenda for the next couple of months. Since the last council meeting, we just made a couple of changes. One was putting the prospective potential new park on Highway 12 back on the CIP with a potential start date of 2028. Talking to Katie, Katie looks like still here. She was hit by the stand over there, podium. The project went started until 2028 because we would apply for the grant next May in 2026, and it would take, even if we got approved, it would take 12 to 18 months apparently to get the contract finalized, which seems like a really, really long time, but that is what I've been told. So that's been added on there. The other change has been, we have to update the city's comp plan. It's supposed to be updated every 10 years. Last time it was updated was in 2016, so it has to be a 2026 project. So that's been added on the CIP, and that would be funded by the Community Development Fund. We've been told by Band of Wellness Associates, rough estimate of 50 to 100,000, depending on if you, depending on how many studies you do and how much public engagement there is. So for the CIP, we've chosen a middle-of-the-road approach of 75,000 for an estimate. And then lastly, they revised the estimate for the Nettisham Lift Station. Good news on there, that the cost estimates were revised by Applied Tech from 4.4 million to about 4.1 million, so that has been updated as well. So those are the three changes since the last council meeting.
Any, any discussion, questions? We'll see this again in two weeks?
Yes, you will.
All right. We'll move on then to a discussion of possible decision regarding authorizing fire department to place an order now for CIP item for 2026 fire engine pumper. Expecting a delivery, I believe it was the second quarter of '26, for a purchase price of 937,445, which my understanding is that's less than what was on the CIP. And, and you can place that order right now, Chief?
Right, once we are authorized, we can place the order. That'll give us, we'll stay in current emission standards, we won't have to move to the next emission, next tier of emission standards, and we should be able to take delivery of it, from what they're saying is quarter two of next year.
And we don't have to put any money down?
No. No payment due until delivery of the vehicle, sir.
I like that. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? My, my question, Chief, is have the, are the townships on board with this?
They were all presented this at the last meeting.
And so they're...
They all, they all know about it, Mayor. There was no, there was no pushback.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is the truck here yet?
Next, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding retaining the law firm of Gardner, Cook, Weisberg, and Rona and Stig. Yeah, Stig is the rest of the city. Louise, but I can't say it. To represent the city for a potential PFAS class action litigation.
I, I would ask that this be moved into closed session.
Although I, before we go there, I don't know that we need to. I think we could handle it right in open, knowing what I know after talking to Attorney Ikas and companies.
Oh, tell us what you know.
Okay. So back in 2022, you know, the city did do testing, and there were no hits for PFAS at that time. Based upon that, you did not enter into the class action litigation at that point in time. We do not see any benefit to joining in litigation until you know that you are impacted. Attorney Shepero from our office is reaching out to Nate at your water department. I don't know if you're there. I don't know if that's happened yet, to see if there's anything, any updated testing that's been done to indicate that there's an issue.
No, I mean, we just sampled again, so we don't have those results yet.
Okay, all right. So if you do end up getting results that indicate that there is an issue, then we actually have had really good results with the Napoli firm, that originally had asked you to join in that class action litigation. They're involved in drafting the settlement agreements. But the way this whole thing is set up, you don't, you don't receive any funds at all as part of the settlements unless you're impacted. So at this point in time, it's kind of premature, and we don't really see a benefit to going with this particular law firm over another until we know for sure that we have an impact.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions? So I was talked by the layer about that the final due date for this was coming up, but we can join in a lawsuit like that at any point?
Yeah, I checked with Attorney Ikas, and there's, any, any dates are, are far enough off in the future that you have time to do the testing. So there's not, there's not like an impending deadline that makes you have to pull the trigger at this point in time.
So I would entertain a motion.
A motion to do nothing?
Second. You've got a motion to do nothing. Add a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on to new business, we've got discussion and possible decision regarding proposed resolution 2025-25, a resolution authorizing an intercon loan from the city electric fund to tax incremental District Number Four.
Make a motion to approve.
Same.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Ken Minell.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have a discussion of possible decision regarding execution of the first revision to the state municipal financial agreement for WISDOT State Highway 11 project from Church Street to Cobb Road. Who's got, who'd like to think...
I can give some background.
Matt?
Yeah, I can give some background on that. So the first round of the SMFAs, which includes three separate projects, was approved by council, I'm going to say probably close to a year and a half ago. Don't hold me to it, but it was around that timeframe. And we'll probably see multiple revisions, which is kind of referred to in this revision one. So this basically sets up the opportunity for us to include non-participating items where the state wouldn't participate, so if we wanted to expand our project to include additional sites... additional sidewalk, like we've talked about down by the school, or if we wanted to include black decorative signals instead of just the standard DOT signals, that this would allow us to do that. So it's not locking us in, but it just sets up the opportunity for them to be able to start to look into those, get some costs together for us, to do some preliminary design.
So you're looking for a motion to approve this agreement, or?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve this agreement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we're going to just skip this, do we have to announce that, or? Yeah, I would announce it. I've taken care of it already. Okay, so I'm going to, we're going to adjourn to closed session. Item A is the common counsel may entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute section 19.85, one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. It's a review and discussion regarding compensation of the fire chief, assistant fire chief, and HR manager. Item B, related back to the PFAS litigation with the law firm, and we've already settled that matter, so we will not be discussing that in closed session. We will reconvene to open session for item A. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Scott McClory.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Cam I know.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, we're back in open session. Do we have a motion on item A?
A two-part motion, apparently. The first part would be the motion to give the fire chief and the assistant fire chief a 6% pay increase. The fire chiefs would apply to the next pay period, and the assistant fire chiefs would apply to the anniversary date that is coming up shortly for the assistant fire chief. And part B of the motion is to, is to award the 4% pay increase to the human resources manager, and that will be effective on her upcoming anniversary date. That's my motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Roll call?
Roll, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who's second? Scott McClory.
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.
Yes.
Peter Harvey.
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie.
Yes.
Cam I know.
Yes.
Dan Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned?